All right, 7:01, we'll call a meeting to order. Mrs. Dickman, would you please lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director, show all board members are present. Mr. Board has public notice been given.
It has. We are working off of the revised agenda, which includes the one actionable item of the MOU with the Richland County.
A public comment per policy 0167.3. Anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student, or an enrolled district student. Speaker is not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make specific persons a subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for complete list requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Steele?
None.
Thank you. All right, on to reports. District Administrator's report.
Just two dates for the board to be aware of. A week from this Wednesday, March 5th, is our parent-teacher conferences for the spring. And then a reminder that our March 10th board meeting is going to be at the Richland Center Primary School at 7:00. Any questions on either of those? Thank you.
Board member reports.
We had two of them. Wednesday, February 19th at 6:00, Buildings Property and Transportation met. We had a long list of things. One that included some closed-session discussion regarding transportation contracts. There'll be more to come on that. Referendum projects updates. Mr. Jones has informed us about 90% of the design for this building is complete. The majority of the electrical materials and such are now on order for the primary school, and they're just in the beginning steps of getting up to the high school. So, obviously, more to come regularly. We had approved disposal of items that will come to the full board at a later time. There was brought up through Ms. Troxell, through some citizen concerns about adding retractable railing on bleachers. And so, Mr. Bosworth and Jones informed us that they're going to start at the high school. They already have a quote. It can come right out of the maintenance budget. And then they're going to circle back to start in on quotes for this intermediate building. So there would be handrails for all of the bleachers at those two schools. And that would also come out of budget for this building. We had an insurance audit informational discussion, as well as insurance renewals for upcoming contracts. Concession stand fire update, which will be discussed later tonight. Also later tonight will be MOU for the Richland County Campus Gym. I'm sure that'll be discussed. And then our schedule at a glance for '24-'25, nothing more often there. Next, 7:00 PM, Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations Met. We had our mid-year report for AGR, which is the gap reduction that's low income to other. Progress across both English and math. Some areas that are already being focused on for what other tweaks can be done to improve even further. Mrs. Stoltz gave us a public relations and marketing update with all of the tasks that she has to handle daily. We discussed job descriptions, which will be a later discussion here at the board. Policy 5851, which is school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays, was a discussion. I had brought it up as a topic mostly because it seems as though we run into time constraints at times for needing to get that policy waived. And so I had just brought up the discussion to what if we were to give some of that power to the administration to use as necessary? More to come later. Goals and priorities were discussed. Nothing more to add at the moment. Also, a '25-'26 alternative education options. That'll come to the full board at a later time. But more than just our class within a class or the R-S-E. But there'll be more, some exciting other alternatives that could be to come. And then lastly, our '24-'25 schedule at a glance. And that is all.
The Richland School District Foundation met on February 17th. Had our normal guidance report discussing the scholarships with Ms. Culver. There is a link on the Richland School District site for our students to be able to fill out those applications. The scholarship deadline is April 15th. And then March 15th is the early bird registration to have that with an opportunity for an early bird scholarship. All you have to do to earn that scholarship is have your application done by March 15th. There's no other requirements for that. We discussed the outstanding alumni and scholarship awards night. With those coming up and how can we get more people to apply for the outstanding alumni? And we discussed the Sherman-Mackenzie Making a Difference Award that is chosen by the faculty and staff of the Richland Center High School. And then we're looking at a donation for the tech ed department as well from Paul Mullenberg. That will be coming. And then with our personnel and negotiation committee, we met on the 19th. And we had Mrs. Troxell presented more of the board development information that she had at the WASBE convention. We'll be looking at doing some different things in a future meeting. That. We discussed our insurance benefits. Had an update on the self-funded dental plan that we put in place. And so far, we have seen the annual savings that we were expecting. For last year, it was close to $20,000, as it was expected. We also had a discussion on the negotiation process with our teachers and non-certified staff. That has started with the administration. There'll be more of that coming as the process continues. We had a '20-'25-'26 budget update with the preliminary numbers. It was a very high look at where the numbers potentially will be headed. So we'll be getting more details as those budget pieces come into focus. We also had a new job description position, Guiding Coalition member, that will be brought to the full board at a future meeting. We also had the discussion of the alternative education options with Partner School, RC within a school, and ROA. And then, as Mr. Hunter said, we're exploring some exciting new options that may be coming down the line that are just in discussion phases at this point. Then we as well had our schedule at a glance. And the only thing that we did differently, we added board development for our March meeting to have discussion on that. And then we did move into closed session to discuss employee employment, promotion, and compensation of employees. And that is all.
Question on one of your topics, the scholarships. If I'm not mistaken, some are available for recent graduates as well. Is that... Are you familiar with there being some that even a year out of school may still qualify? Any... And then...
High school admin, do you have any insight on that off the top of your head?
There's continuing students that would be able to maintain a scholarship that they already received.
Okay.
That'll be a second year.
Okay.
I'm not aware of...
Renewal.
Yeah, renewal, thank you.
Okay.
I'm not aware of new applications. There are scholarship opportunities with the Richland County Campus Foundation for students that have already graduated that have moved into the area or whatever. But that's not what we're involved with.
All right. Thank you. On to the FFA report update.
Okay, so the link to the presentation from the students of FFA, I think there were six or seven of the students that presented, is in your board docs. Hopefully, you got a chance to see that. I believe I saw Ms. Fettin was joining us remotely. I'm not sure if board members had any questions for her regarding the presentation of the things that they have done and the things that they're planning on doing here moving forward. Okay, see you in a minute. Thank you.
Teacher Leader Pilot Program update.
And then similar, Mr. Troxell, the Teacher Leader Pilot Program or the Teacher Partnering Program that they have, they're in year two at the Richland Center High School. There are actually three different videos. If you got a chance to watch those, kind of on the process and where they're at, all of that is on the website. Again, any questions? I don't know if Mr. Troxell's online, but if you have any questions that I can't answer or that we can't answer, we'll certainly get you some answers. A lot of good information there as well.
So far from your assessment, would you be intending on continuing after the three-year initial pilot program? And would that be another three-year likely?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know that I can answer that right now because we're still in what I would call the evaluation phase, still tweaking it. Do we extend it? Do we expand it? Do we go to the other buildings? What's the funding look like? I think all of those still need to be determined.
Sure.
But I do think it's been a beneficial process that we've got going here. Okay.
Special Education report.
And then Mr. Joseph is at a federal funding conference right now. I don't know if he's on as well, but he had a video as well, really a good reference if you ever need to just look back and see, like, what does that mean? What does that mean from a special education standpoint, all those acronyms and things like that? That's a good reference to have. But immediately, are there any questions that the board has regarding special education? Okay, thank you. Again, all three good presentations, and those are available to our public through board docs and online.
All right, on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of February 10th, 2025?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Millian. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Ms. Troxell, discussion. Mr. Millian?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, on to financial items, approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I move we approve statement of cash dated February 17th, 2025, and Community First Bank General Checking Accounts checks number 8699187056, ACH number 242502668 through 242502806, EFT number 202400101, or 101, sorry, through 202400107, and voided checks for a net total of $390,952.73. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion made by Mr. Dowdner. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, and Mr. Hunter. Mr. Bosworth, anything to point out or add?
There was three invoices I would point out. On page three near the bottom, there's an invoice for Pelletary for about $220. It's labeled as shredding. We have a lot of documents in the school district, confidential documents. We need large bins at multiple bins at multiple buildings. We contract that out so we don't spend all that time shredding things. On page five, kind of in the middle, there's an invoice for Richland School District. So basically, we're paying ourselves between funds. Fund 21 over to fund 50. There were some old food service accounts from a couple of years ago, from when Argentina students visited, that we hadn't cleaned up yet. That's what that dollar value is for. And then I'll also add that we've done some more work, and we've cleaned up some incomplete accounts. And now we're going after some of our active students who have large accounts, large negative accounts. And we have some donated money to try to help them to get our food service balance as back as close to zero as possible. And then finally, on page 15, about a third of the way down, there's one for Santa Care labeled Vacuum for $4,300. I just wanted to point out that's multiple vacuums, six or seven in fact. Not a super duper $4,000 vacuum, but multiple vacuums, just to replace the ones that we currently have. That's it.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Bosworth, I do have a question on page three, the St. Mary's Educator Retrugal Courses.
Yep.
Are we helping offset tuition or something like that for...
Yeah, that's part of the grant funding that we receive. And grant funding is available to all students. There's a formula that's used to figure out how much private schools are entitled to. And then they have some parameters they have to stay inside of, but that's one of the expenditures that our private schools have chosen to spend their money on. And we're kind of the middle person to help them get that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Questions? Mr. Van Lande?
Aye.
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 On to consent agenda items. Mrs. Steele?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items. Motion to accept the donation of two snowmobiles valued at approximately $400 from Wayne Noble. Motion to accept the donation of live chicken hatching equipment valued at approximately $400 from DonorsChoose.com. Motion to accept the donation of money valued at about $1,000 from Petro Oil Incorporated. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Van Lande. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman. Discussion? Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank Wayne Noble, Donors Choose, and Petro Oil Incorporated for their generous donations. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
I approve.
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Ms. Troxell, discussion. Mr. Hunter?
Aye.
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 All right, on to information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so in the table there, you'll see that there are two positions for this school year, '24-'25 school year. Both are related to our STING after-school program, a staff member as well as a program driver. Both of those positions are open. And then for next year, '25-'26, we've started posting some of our certified staff. We've got the speech and language pathologist position open. I believe that we are in the process of doing interviews or nearing completion of that. And then you'll see that the five-year-old kindergarten classroom teacher is on hold. We are doing some internal analysis on where we could best use that teacher. There is a retirement in the fifth, excuse me, in 5K, but we may not want that position to be hired as a 5K person. It might be first grade or second grade or another staff member in the building. We'll stay staff neutral, but we're going through and kind of analyzing where we could best use that person based on class sizes. So that's why it's on hold. Otherwise, all of the transfers and support staff, co-curricular positions are on the bottom of that memo as they typically are. Any questions from the board?
Are there ever circumstances where you have, say, a half a class of 5K and you might mesh that with a first grade oversize, for example? Is there ever blended grades?
Yeah, I don't recall that we've done that, but we have certainly talked about it internally. And I don't know that it's ever come to fruition, but we would examine all, every and all option when it comes to those tweener classes.
Sure.
At any grade level.
Sure.
Thank you.
Update on concession stand fire.
Okay, well, Mr. Jones is getting ready here. I don't need to share my screen here, but you'll be able to see in the memo kind of the timeline of events that Mr. Bosworth has typed up here, starting at approximately 3:45 AM on the morning of Saturday, February 15th, and then the subsequent events that took place that week through the insurance and adjuster process. Mr. Bosworth, while I'm pulling that up, do you have anything to add since that memo was typed that...
No, nothing to add. That's the most recent information we have.
Okay. All right. Can you please share?
I'll take an in.
All right, so I'll turn this over to Mr. Jones. The view you're looking at here is actually from the west end of the high school, looking out onto our athletic complex. Athletic complex would be over here. This building right here is the concession stand building. So, Mr. Jones, I'll try to keep up with your narrative, but take it away.
I'll just, I'm going to start even earlier than this. I know Mr. Bosworth put a memo in. We think we started somewhere between probably 3:00, around there to 3:25 in there. We have some other video that I don't have here tonight supporting that. At about 3:25, we actually could see a flame coming out of the top of this roof there, which it was trying to find air. This fire was trying to find air and it found a vent. And it was just two or three times it spurred it out of that. Then fast-forwarding to where we are, what time are we here, Mr. Board?
3:29.
3:29.
Yeah, just started at 3:29, so it's eight minutes in.
Fire is going right there. It started, as you're looking from here, from the band room down, it started in the left upper corner of the building as we're looking at it here. Started high in the roof. As we can start moving here now, Mr. Board.
Can you tell me when to stop?
Very good leak given, Andy's lights. You can see smoke that's right here. Our maintenance crew worked the night before. We had girls regional wrestling here. We had talked, I had talked with them. We planned on getting in here by 4:00 because we had boys regionals. And buses were going to be here probably by 7:00, so we had to get clean on this. Mr. Shannon from the maintenance staff and Mr. Noble just happened to be down there getting ready, skid steers stored in there. Mr. Shannon drove by. It was snowing fairly hard, and you can't see that here. Thought it was just steam. Went up, got his truck, came back down, realized it wasn't. And then Mr. Noble got there about the same time, called me, called 911. And this is all about probably 10 minutes to four. You can see it's boiling. So it's superheating in that attic. Temperatures there probably are around 1,000 degrees right now. Fast-forward a little bit. Lights you saw were Casey going down to the shed in front of the ski. That's his truck right there, and he's getting out. He's probably on the phone with 911 and calling me. You'll see a whole bunch of police cars coming in. You'll see me come in, captain from our fire department coming in.
Can we fast-forward a little bit?
Yeah. So I can talk about this for now, and you probably don't want me to. So, very quick thinking on our maintenance staff part. We had two bramble mowers and skid steer in there to the tune of probably about $150,000. They got them out of there. And it's breaking through. So that's right on the corner, right by the boys bathroom. That's Wood Trust above there, so there is a fire break towards the other end, and the fire break worked relatively well in the attic.
Was the damage contained to just that one storeroom, other than obviously smoke and water damage?
Damage is to most of the roof. Even though you can't see it. If you can fast-forward a little bit more, Mr. Board. Down in here is our first quick-attack truck, and they're going to get water on it as fast as they can. Then the rest of the troops come relatively quick, but they were there within five minutes. So now that fire is probably about 1,400 degrees.
How long was the fire for on the scene?
Two and a half hours. They had this knocked down. They got there right before 4:00, and they had it, what we call knocked down, they had it knocked down by 15 after. So relatively quick. Ended up putting the aerial device up there, and then we had to move it again because we couldn't reach it from where it was. It was right here. We had to move it over into the center of the building because the roof collapsed and we couldn't get to the fire. We had some mop-up to do there, and they did a really good job. I just backed out of it. I just let them do their thing. Nobody got hurt.
So insurance has been, I guess, you and John?
We met with the adjuster. We had, so the backup to that day. We did get electrician out there. We got some air heat put back into a couple rooms in the building. But not any further than that, so it's very minimal heat. We had company on Madison come out and put the tire pod in the roof. They did some of it on Saturday. They came back on Sunday and finished it. And then we met with the adjuster on Thursday? I think it was Thursday last week, whatever day.
Tuesday.
Tuesday? Well, there. Time flies. He is not a cause and origin, so he kind of said the same thing. We kind of know where it started. So right now, we're in waiting. We're either going to send a cause and origin person out or an engineer out, and we haven't heard back from them. So I think tomorrow we'll give them a jingle and see what's going on. Kind of where we're sitting right now.
We didn't have any issues with the blocks after that cold spell and all that water in there? That was one of our initial concerns initially.
So, still, one of my initial concerns, there's a lot of water that went down the flutes in those blocks. The insurance company is aware of that, and I just, I'm afraid we might have some blocks start popping. blocks start pumping from the freezing. We'll wait and see. Very minimal heat in most of the building. Most of the damage to the interior structure is on the east end, in that first team room. They actually caved in there, and the rest of the building is minimal smoke, some water. It'll need a paint job, but I, I, it's my feeling that that roof's gonna have to be, trusses and everything tore off and new roof put on it. The electrical, the plumbing, it's all above ventilation. So we're just kinda in a waiting game. I've never been on this end of a fire before, twice on the other end. So it's something new for me. I mean, we can walk away from a fire department and we really never hear the results. Things don't move as fast as I thought they would. Just gotta be patient. I trust our insurance company, they'll, they'll do us right, so.
Questions for Mr. Jones, or myself, or Mr. Bosworth?
You mentioned in our committee meeting that your, just off the top of your head guess is that it's closed until probably next school year.
That's what the adjuster thought, he thought it would take. He said, don't plan on using it this spring, is what he told us, so.
So with that, I assume the administration, specifically at that building, is looking at what alternative restroom options track season will come upon us, and I imagine porta-potties and hot dogs out of a tinfoil box?
About five weeks to figure this out, so I'm, I'm hoping the insurance company will help us and guide us to, so. It's kinda where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
We'll keep you updated as, as things move along there with that, either at the committee level or the full board.
Goals and priorities updated.
Okay, so I mentioned at a previous board meeting here that after our January count that we had actually surpassed our goal of retaining 80% of our students, but I wanted to then and will now remind the board that, you know, we had 10 or 11 Argentina students that would have been included in our January count, and there's still a lot of students that are, are coming, and still some that are moving out or choosing other options. While that seems to have slowed, there's still half of a school year left and, and all of the summer, and so our official measuring stick for this particular goal will be next September, when our September count comes around. And so I'm not calling it a win yet, although our numbers are certainly trending in the right direction. What I really wanna focus on tonight regarding our goals and what I shared at the committee level is that there has been a group of, of employees, 10 employees to be exact, from a variety of different employee groups that have been working hard to take the definition of distinguished staff that the board has approved and put that into a measurable rubric or tool that, that can be used to truly determine whether or not someone meets the criteria. And so while they've got the rubric, and I haven't shared the entire rubric with you because it's still in, in draft mode, I did share the 27 points that they have come up with on what a distinguished staff member looks like. And so there are nine components to the definition, and this group has taken each of those nine components and have three sub-criteria. So nine times three is the 27. And so just for example, I'm not gonna read each of these, but under the leadership category, on the rubric, I just listed the things that a distinguished employee would do for each of those three things. A distinguished employee is one who consistently shares knowledge and supports team learning, consistently engages in teamwork and contributes meaningfully, and consistently uplifts, uplifts and inspires peers through positive influence. And so throughout these definitions, you're gonna see the word consistently, okay? There were four parts to the rubric. First one was rarely or not often, the next one was sometimes, number three, which is where we want employees to be at, is consistently, and then actually, number four, above and beyond, that is where they're leading or initiating those, that, that particular topic. And so consistently, that definition is spread throughout these 27 things, but I wanted to make sure our board and our public saw the hard work that they had been putting into that. They've met six times, probably a total of 15 to 18 hours, put into this, both in the committees and outside, trying to come up with this. We still have some work to do. This was presented at the committee level as well, and then hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a full rubric to be able to share with not only the board, but also with our, with our staff on, on what this looks like for implementation next school year. Any questions on that or any of our goals? Again, this was the one that we've really wanted to focus on here, that we've been working hard on over the last 60 days for sure.
So for meeting, meeting the rubric, if you hit it one time, you're classified, or is it where you have, needs to be two years, three years, four years of consistently meeting those benchmarks?
Yep. So ultimately, this would be a, a board decision, but what this particular committee is recommending, and I think our administration is, is on board with that as well, is that once someone applies and becomes, has the status of distinguished, they would hold that for three years with smaller goals within that three years. They would pick one of the nine areas of focus that they would then just look for some self-improvement and a much less scale of, of time investment, unlike the, the application process. Other smaller criteria that they've discussed is that you have to be a member of the Richland School District for at least three years. Even if you've come in, you know, as a teacher, for example, with 25 years of experience to really make a difference with our students and, and impact our buildings and culture, you have to be here for a little bit, so that was one of the things they've talked about as well. And I won't go into all the details, but just those are the things that they're talking about, and it's a really, really good discussion, and it's, it's really good to have the multiple employee groups recognized there, because what works for one employee group may not work for another one, and so it's important for us to use terminology that everyone can understand and consistency across the board. Okay, more to come. Thank you.
Referendum update.
So Mr. Huntimer gave a brief update on, on the buildings and property, just an ongoing topic at the buildings and property level. On Friday afternoon, we, we got some good news. The DNR approved our plans for the work going to be done at the primary school. So that was one big hurdle that we were kind of waiting on, because we're not in the flood plain, but we're in the flood fringe, and so any altering of earth needed to be approved by the DNR. An F&amp;H study, I believe is what it's called. We submitted that through Nexus's help, we paid for that, and then the DNR on Friday afternoon gave us the go-ahead. So that plan, as far as the parking lot, if you remember when I, when I presented the parking lot, said this is contingent upon the DNR, given it's okay. They've now done that, and so all signs are, are moving ahead to move with the primary school as originally intended. Starting construction right after school gets out, they're gonna be bringing in some storage bins for our teachers, providing boxes, and all of the things that they need to be able to pack up. Mrs. Hardy and I will work with teachers and the rest of our admin on making sure that our staff have enough time to do that, and then everything should be ready to go if all goes well for the start of school in the 25, fall of '25, with the exception of those four 5K classrooms. And that will go into the fall a little bit, but Mrs. Hardy has, has worked hard to find alternative placements within the building for those, for those classes. So we're hoping that that's closer to the start of school than it is to the end of the first semester, but we will patiently wait for those new, new classrooms and, and safe foundation. Maybe I'll pause there. Any questions on the primary school before I move to the other buildings? Okay, you can always come back to it. Intermediate school, Mr. Huntimer mentioned that we were about 90% done. Since that, that committee meetings, we have had our 100% completion date with Nexus, although full disclosure, we're probably really at 99%. There are a few smaller things that we've got to work through, I should say Nexus, and the engineers have to work through as it relates to making sure that all of the electrical and the HVAC and everything within the component of the building is ready for submittal. But as far as we're concerned, at this particular moment in time, we are 100% complete with the design phase for the intermediate school. And when I had the conversation, Mr. Jones and I had the conversation with Nexus on Friday, and they let us know about the DNR, they also said that, well, we don't wanna put the cart in front of the horse, but they are thinking that there may be a good possibility that we could get some of the things at the intermediate school done yet this summer. And so bids will be going out in the very near future. Those bids will come back to buildings and property, very similar to the primary school bids did, ultimately to the board. I anticipate that at the end of April, excuse me, at the end of March or the beginning of April, to get those finalized, and then if there are components that we can do this summer and take advantage of, you know, site work being done just across the river and get them here and, and get a better price or, or more timely work, then we're gonna try to take advantage of that as well. Any questions on the intermediate school? Much more knowns with the intermediate school. We really didn't know what we were gonna get into with those classrooms, but there's a, there's a lot more known, norms, and so knowns, I should say. We are very, very optimistic with, with bids on where they're gonna come in at with the intermediate school. And then the high school, early stages of design phase, I would say we should, we could put it at about the 15 to 20% mark. We've had some user groups pertaining to the theater. We have had an inside user group that got together, met with Nexus on the needs and what they would like to see that space used and how it, how it would operate, as well as a user group with some outside organizations, the local dance folks and, and those people who are using, community players invited in some people to do that. So that's happening as well. Hopefully, we find a lot of similarities, and we'll be able to merge the two together and really have a space that works both for us internally and available to, to our public that works in a way that they wanna see it fit as well. In addition, our high school administration and members of our tech ed department will be traveling to Barocua and Bangor in the coming weeks, soon. I don't know, have the exact date?
March 7.
March, I'm sorry?
March 7.
March 7. They have recently renovated their tech ed spaces, and so this would be a good opportunity for us and our teachers to see what modern and new tech ed spaces look like for all components of our tech ed department, the CTE department. So again, early stages with that, but moving forward. And then again, just, just let the board know, I have had some very, very early discussions with the city revolving around how it's going to look related to the entrance, the Hive Drive entrance. We would really like to get a sidewalk connected from the corner of Hive Drive up to the school. We have a lot of students that are walking on the road or having to walk in the mud. Since we gave that street to the city, it is technically a city street, so I'm working with city officials on how we can try to work that in as well. They're wonderful to work with, we've got a great relationship, and I don't anticipate there being any issues, but again, that is a city street that we're trying to incorporate some safetiness in as well on getting a sidewalk up, up the, up the road. That's what I have for an update. Happy to try to answer any questions. Okay, thank you.
Time to action items. Memorandum of Understanding with Richland County for Campus Gym.
Okay, so this was the revised or added item from the original hosted meeting. We did get an MOU back from the county, Richland County, as it relates to what I'm going to refer to as the campus gymnasium and the adjoining fields and courts. That MOU is attached. It went to the Buildings and Property Committee with the three revisions, two revisions, actually, and then one more was, was added, and that's in blue there in the memo, and that is to remove the word tennis from the established facilities so that it just reads courts, and then that would encompass the basketball courts as well. That same revision, and this is the, the added part from the committee meeting, is in number six of the MOU, striking the word tennis, and then finally adding the district's business official position as one of the authorized personnel in number four. I've talked to Attorney Wendell, he has talked to city administrators, they have no issues with these changes, and so if approved tonight, we would get those revisions made and get this MOU in place. But we would be looking for a motion. This did go to the Buildings, Property, Transportation Committee as a recommendation to assign, approve this. But Mr. Huntimer, did I leave anything out from the committee standpoint that you would like to share?
It's free to us, and it's basically the same agreement that we had in place for many years prior to kind of the hubbub with the campus. It's a win for us.
Maintenance of the, both the fields and the courts and the building itself, is that a county's responsibility, or is that shared?
The, they will pay for the utilities, we will take care of the maintenance in the areas that we're using it and clean up after ourselves and provide toiletries and things like that. It's probably just as easy for us to maintain the field in the summer when we're doing everything else and so that our, our folks can use it, so.
Is there a motion to accept the Buildings, Property and Transportation Committee's recommendation and approve the memorandum of understanding with Richland County for the campus gym as presented? Motion made by Mr. Van Landy, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Troxel, discussion? Ms. Troxel?
Aye.
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 I'll make the motion to move into closed session pursuant to 19.851 CE and RF and Wisconsin Statute 118.125 to consider employment, promotion, compensation of employees, discussing individual employee hiring and administrator evaluations, and to discuss pupil or individual student discipline and student open enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dickman, discussion? Mrs. Dickman?
Aye.
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 Thank you.